Good morning to everybody. The Committee on Health now calls this public roundtable informational hearing on the proposed rules and regulations governing the issuance of sanitary permits as submitted by the Department of Public Health and Social Services via the Office of the Governor. This was sent down to the Legislature on February 4, 2016. So what we have here, this is, just to make it very clear, this is not a bill that does anything. It's a review of the proposal that has been sent down to the Legislature through the pursuant to the Administrative Judication Act. The Department had gone through that to make some changes to the rules and regulations governing the issuance of sanitary permits. And so when we, the committee had received the proposal and have seen that during their public hearing, there was really no one who showed up, I believe, at the hearing, right?
We showed up.
Yeah, of course. Because most important people were there. But no one else did, so we wanted to make sure that we reach out to as much stakeholders as possible. My office had gone out establishment by establishment handing out these proposals. And also, we had about maybe a few hundred establishments that we did invite. And so now we have maybe about four or five different establishments here. But this is good.
12 percent.
Yes. So we'll go, we'll have environmental health. Tom, you can start. And then if there's any questions from those who are here, then we'll go ahead and open that up. All right? If you can introduce yourself.
Sure. Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. My name is Tom Noddo. I'm the Chief Environmental Health Officer with the Division of Environmental Health of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I'd like to thank all of you for coming. This is definitely a better turnout than the actual public hearing we had, so I'm pleased to see everyone here, and I mean that sincerely. We always want to produce the best product that will be used to govern our sanitary operation of not just restaurants that we're most commonly known for, but other health regulated facilities. And I'll pass the mic on to Cynthia. She'll introduce herself, and I've given her the honor of presenting for the division. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Cynthia Naval. I'm a planner for with the Division of Environmental Health. Did you want to continue with the introductions before we went into our presentation?
So we can go on, because we are recording this so that we have a record of it?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alvin Pablo. I work for Jimmy McNeil. I'm the compliance manager for all the restaurants.
Good morning. My name is Arnaldo Morato. I represent Crown Bakery.
I represent Guam Fast Foods.
My name is John. I'm with the Sharted Hotel, so representing Guam Hotel Restaurant Association.
My name is Greg Kosanke. I'm here representing myself, actually, so I'm under false pretenses. But I did, I was the president of Guam Fast Food, which is KFC in Sabaro for 30 years, until just recently.
My name is Jonas Charlof, and I'm the Mayor of Marito. Only because I host two events that I use as a fundraiser, and I have vendors that sell food on the premises, so I'd like to be here and see what's going on. I'm putting in main place, well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So Tom, or Cynthia?
Good morning. We put together a little bit of a briefing to look at the main changes that we've had for the sanitary permits. As you know, we regulate a lot of different kinds of built-in. Health-regulated establishments, they range everything from your eating and drinking and food, which we have highly represented here, as well as institutional facilities like schools and daycares, hotels, cosmetic establishments, laundries and dry cleaners, and others. Chapter 21, Section 21103 authorizes us to adopt regulations for the issuance of sanitary permit, including setting a fee schedule. The last time we changed the regulations was in 2011, and in the enabling legislation for that, Public Law 3141, we were given instructions through that that at least every five years we needed to review and amend the rules and regulations. That's what's leading up to this. We began this process last year. This year in May, we'll hit that five-year watermark. We do have a fee schedule. It is established to help us recoup the cost incurred by Public Health for the issuance of the sanitary permits, based on our staff costs, their time spent doing the inspections and pre-operation inspections to set these up, as well as all the materials and supplies that involved in getting you a sanitary permit. We said this was fast and short. Okay. So the main changes that we looked at here were to revise some of the definitions from the 2011 version that did not match statutes. We made some corrections to those. To add in for temporary food service establishments and special village events, which were defined in the last update, that if they meet certain criteria as to participant numbers, the types of foods that'll be served, the event organizers need to provide a booth and a parking space for our DEH staff. If you've been involved in temporary facilities for the past, I believe since about November, you might have seen that we have a lot of DEH staff that go out there and do inspections during those events. Unfortunately, some of the temporary events are where you have the highest risk of your participants contracting a foodborne disease. They're meant to be ephemeral and short-lasting, and quite often, they don't have the infrastructure set up at those temporary events to really promote the best food safety. So they're out there watching and making sure that everybody who's involved uses the best food safety practices that's possible to have. So we're asking that we just get a dedicated parking spot and a place for us to set up a table, do our reports in. We also made updates, and I believe that's why most of you are here, to our fee schedule. We made an increase to it to reflect the cost of issuing that permit in 2016 and beyond. It's based on our inspection numbers. The law states that we need to inspect health-regulated establishments four times a year, and we acknowledge that we have not had the staff resources to do that for quite a few years. So we're looking at staggering this. We based our first increase on getting out there and doing two inspections per establishment per year. The following year, we increased that to three inspections a year, and by 2018, up to four inspections a year. So the costs for doing all of that, the staff time involved, have been incorporated into our proposed increases. They also reflect the new salaries that came about as a result of the HAY study, the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. The current base fee is $290 for an establishment with one to 10 employees, and we're looking at increasing that to $340 in 2016, which is a difference of $50 per permit, or about $4.17 a month. In 2017, we increased the number of times we inspect establishments to three. That goes up to 438, a $98 difference from the prior year, or about $8 a month. And in 2018, when we will be anticipating doing four inspections a year, it's up to $540, which is an increase of $102 from the prior year, or $8.50 a month. Over the three-year period, a total increase of $250 per permit, or $20.83 a month, for your number of employees above 10. This is our base fee for one to 10 employees. For the number of employees above 10, it'll still be $5 per additional employee, and we decided to raise our initial deposit for the sanitary permit from $20 to $30. Our division is nearly 100% locally funded and operated. We have a few small grants for specialty projects, but everything that we do is either from the general fund or from revenue accounts. Our fee increase will help us recoup the cost and generate revenue to recruit, train, and retain our DEH staff to conduct more inspections. As I said earlier, we're mandated to do four times a year. We have not hit that mark for a bit. But more inspections equate to increased compliance with the rules and regulations, thus minimizing or preventing disease transmission. We look primarily at foodborne illness, because that's the most common, but there are other diseases that can be transmitted from other health-regulated establishments in the course of work. I'm thinking of cosmetology, where people can get funguses from improperly cleaned cosmetology equipment there, and some of the other schools. Heavens to help us, long-term care and childcare establishments are also great little bases for doing disease transmission. So we also need to remind people sometimes that our increased inspections really need to include non-food facilities. We've done a big focus on food for quite a few years, but now we really need to get out there, let people understand we're out there for other establishments as well, hotels, cosmetic, public pools, and others, which historically have received fewer inspections compared to the food. And we decided to do that a little graphically. Just in fiscal year 2015, you can see that over 45%, actually, over 50% are between eating and drinking establishments and retail food establishments of all the inspections that we conducted. Institutional facilities is up to, well, it's hard to read in this, Tom, about 40% of that, and those are childcare establishments. We hit every single childcare, that's four times a year. So we're very good on hitting those. We have dedicated people to do that. But some of our other smaller ones that we got to last year were cosmetic and laundry and dry cleaning, and we have other categories out there where we didn't even do one inspection because of resources. These two categories, institutional and food, take up most of our resources that we really need to spread to others, like hotel and dormitories, which are part of hotel. That's our presentation. We're willing, happy to answer any questions that we can.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Mayor, would you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll go ahead and start with the mayor.
You know, ma'am, I'm not so good at names, but maybe as we go along and meet every time, then it seems it, but memorizing your name is a big problem. However, the reason why I'm here is that, you know, ever since I became mayor in 2009, I've been fighting to get my establishment instead of my vendors actually building a house in order for them to accommodate the patrons that come to the event. While I see all the venues where just pop-up tents and are selling their wares, their foods, and I don't see them, there's no sink there, no, you know, for sanitary, you know, when it comes to sanitary, I don't care where and what part of the world you're from, sanitation and cleanliness, there's cleanliness, you know, cleanliness is taught all over the world. When you touch the food, before you even touch the food, you wash your hands. Before you touch the food, you sanitize the utensils and the containers that you're gonna put, and you clean them as best as you can, because, you know, like you said, it's, you know, the disease, if there's any bacteria in any of the utensils or even in your hand, it's gonna spread to those that consume the food that we process. My concern is that when I, you know, when I look at the night markets granted that there's only one day a month, I mean, one day a week, but it's four times a month, 48 times a year. Well, my event is only a three-day event. Why can't we treat it on a day-to-day, like Friday, you know, we'll process our food, and we'll sell it for that evening, for that day. Come the next day again, the same thing, you know, you sanitize, everybody sanitizes and prepares your food fresh, because if you don't, you know, if you leave leftover, if you do not, if you do not store it in the right temperature, you know, these people should understand that. You need to put it inside a refrigerated area so that it doesn't advance as far as, you know, picking up, so that you're gonna get food poisoning. But that's my concern. On the sanitary, does that, is that inclusive of health certificate as well?
Do you mean do these regulations include the cost of your health certificates? No, those are separate item.
Yes, because like with me, you know, these are all added costs to my vendors, and for a three-day event, is it worth operating with all the governmental bureaucracy? With the, the thing about my experience is that I see people selling food at night markets, yet when my people are gonna sell, we need to have, you know, a kitchen and everything. And mine is only a three-day weekend. I mean, it's a three-day, for the, you know, for the weekend. And I don't know if you can call it double standard, that, you know, we get, we get to be inspected, and yet we're required to have towel dispensers, three-tier sinks, and it's only for three days. And yet, the night market, like I said, granted, is one day, one night. Regardless of the time, when it comes to sanitary, if you don't sanitize your food and clean, put your food to the right temperature, it's gonna advance to spoils. And when you eat that spoiled food and it's not heated to the temperature to offset that bacteria, you're gonna get people sick. And like you said, you know, cleanliness is everywhere, regardless of what country you're from. There's thought that, you know, when you're dealing with food, process it right and process it clean. But I need to, you know, on this sanitary, is it inclusive? Do you have to provide one big kitchen for everybody involved? Because I have a small area, and can these people be umbrellaed with the already, the sanitation kitchen that operate out of our own villages? You know, they can take their food over to an established caterer and process their food there, you know, before they take it to the site to be barbecued? Because we're on the beach site. It's just like the family going to the beach and barbecuing. These are, these are the questions I need to, because I have an event coming up in April. I have people that already have peddler's license, and already have food license, but how about those that want to just get temporary, just to take advantage of the weekend, you know, craft their food, and the people that come to come and patronize the place? They wanna make a few dollars here and there, they go there and they get their temporary business license, that's a cost. Get their health certificates, that's a cost. Sanitary permits, that's a cost. Fire inspection, that's a cost. So the government, in the end, makes money from the event that takes place. It's not a free event for my village. But what I'm trying to make money for my village, I wanna be able to know that the government is there to, rather than suppress us and oppress us in our operations, assist us in preparing and making sure that the people are coming to a safe venue to eat. Because like I said, you know, nobody teaches unsanitary prep. There's always emphasis on being sanitary, being clean. So at that, you know, I'd like to know that when it comes to my event, we don't have a kitchen down there. Can we umbrella, you know, and I've always emphasized it, can we umbrella or make an exception, because it's only a, you know, it's a one-day event. What's the difference between one day and three days if you do not sanitize your food? It doesn't matter whether it's a two-days or an hour or two of that. If you left your food out exposed prior to you processing it to cook, it's gonna spoil. It's gonna catch some bacteria coming from either you touching it or your utensils being already infected by whatever bacteria, because you did not wash it sanitarily so that you can, you know, take out all the bacterias there, but...
Sure.
Okay. By the way, Senator, Mayor, thank you very much for questions. You raised a lot of issues, so I'll try to touch as many as I can. Some are pertinent to the sanitary permit regulations that we propose, others are not, but either way, I'd like to share that with you anyway, my response to that, and to you, Senator. Regarding the commissary, that is a, that is a requirement within our, well, then, our old former rules and regulations for eating and drinking establishment, and now it's a requirement for the Guam Food Code. The commissary is a, specific commissary, that is, it's a location where a vendor, for example, like a mobile establishment, has a home base to do what needs to be done, storage of food, wash and sanitize all the necessary equipment, because a lot of these mobile businesses, they're small, whether it be a push cart or a small van, and they don't have the infrastructure to do the proper ware washing, if you will. So the purpose of commissary acts as a home base where the business can do what it needs to do off-site, that it cannot be done on-site because, due to infrastructure. So that's the purpose of the commissary. And I will say this, Mayor, you're correct. There are businesses out there which we have very little oversight, not because we don't want to, it's that a lot of them operate without our knowledge. Some operate within, outside of scope of your regular business hours, so it makes it a little bit difficult for us. But I will say that every and all establishments that we inspect are treated the same. By the way, I'd like to say that, for the record, Mayor Charlof, right, from Marito, they're one of the very few mayors that actually come and to us actively and inform us about their monthly, yearly event, if you will, and we, of course, do all the necessary pre-operation inspection and the follow-up inspection. So I'd like to thank the mayor for being proactive and approaching us for questions and concern to help them out in this business. Unfortunately, not all businesses do that. They operate as they wish, and we're just not there. So a lot of the complaints sometimes occur through businesses that operate outside our knowledge. But with that said, I think Cynthia made a great point. One of the reasons why we're trying to increase our inspection number is just that, so we're able to inspect not just as many regulated businesses, but identify those that are operating outside the scope of our knowledge, so we can properly permit them and give them the necessary requirements. There's a lot of questions, so I'll try to touch on that as much as I can. Whether it's one day or three-day, Mayor, the reality is, when it comes to foodborne illness, all it takes is one incident, and that can occur in a minute, a day, or the next day. We've been very fortunate. We haven't had a large outbreak like we did a couple of years ago, but all it takes is just one episode, so whether it be one day, one weekend, or one week, we are always concerned and try to be consistent in how we apply the requirements. But I will say also that all these temporary events, by authority, we can shut down the business if we find there's a violation that needs to be corrected or given 24 hours. Because we're being very proactive in our approach as well, we give the opportunity to the vendor, especially these temporary events, to correct on, as we're there, and that's why we like to attend these events. So we're there, start to tire time if we can, or much of the time, to allow them the corrections and do a follow-up, rather than for us to come back the next day, which is a, which is challenging for everyone. And also, cost-wise, there's no denying, I mean, the amount that you, many, most of these small vendors on this one-day event is probably not much, considering that you have to pay like, what's a...
Actually, it depends too. Sorry, Mayor. This was introduced the last time we did the sanitary permit regula, sorry. The last time that we did the sanitary permit regulations update, a new category was introduced for special village events that are sponsored by your village's municipal planning council, which reduces the cost of the sanitary permit for those who are participating to $25. And so that's pretty much directed at those, for example, who are going to be at your festival next month, so who may come out there once or twice a year to make those few dollars, to keep that cost of the permit down for them. So we ask for usually some kind of authorization letter or a list that we get from the mayor's office, so that we know to charge them only the 25.
Yes.
It is, that's one way to reduce the cost. But Tom's right, some of the other requirements that they need to have, like the three-compartment sink or two-compartment handwashing, those are still gonna be necessary.
Yes, but that, that is, according to your inspectors, if it's gonna be more than a weekend, that's when you're required to, to, you know, build the building for, you know, but if it's less than two weekends, you know, the canopy would suffice. You said about the commissary. You know, when people take and prepare their food, you know, they prepare it at home, right, put it in their containers, and then take it over to their site and barbecue it at the site. So there's water there already, so if they need to wash their hands and wash your utensils that fall down on the ground, they have water, so they can, you know, sanitarily clean them as they get dirty. But my point is that, these guys, you know, I send them up to the one-stop. You guys that are peddling food, get with one-stop. You have public health there, you have fire department there, you have every regulatory entity there. My only concern there is that, you know, I used to only pay $40 for the event, so I pretty much umbrella my vendors. Now every vendor is being assessed $20 with the fire department. I don't know what's going on, but it makes my, it makes my vendors, you know, cringe when they have to pay all these regulators, and for a three-day weekend, and like I said, I'm using these events as a fundraiser so that I can make money, so I can use it for my community. Rather than maybe instead of, you know, stop the event and just keep asking the government, can they get money? Can they just get money that enough to work so hard to make $5,000? But making $5,000 hard is better than asking it easy, you know, I mean, I'm showing the people that I'm willing to work for the money. I just need the government to help me, instead of suppressing and oppressing my vendors, guide us through the process, that we're in compliance. You know, I mean, we don't have a kitchen sink, we don't have a big kitchen for everybody at the venue, so maybe the commissary rules should apply to those, to those events that are just, you know, one day or three days, as opposed to like the liberation where it's a whole month, two months, every day, you're gonna be there every day. So you gotta ensure that, that those, there's continuity in the sanitary. Us, we're only three days. We're only three days' operation. So can we be treated like the night market where it's, let's take it day by day, you know, instead of having it Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Okay, we'll operate Friday, then can we get a permission to operate today again through Saturday? Then get operation, permission to operate Sunday? You can break up the three days by asking to operate every single day rather than consecutive days. I mean, that is what's oppressing our vendors, and I'm worried about is that all the regulatory, they don't mind being, but then, when it comes to the venue, it's the, it's the unknown factors that they have to put up with, and that's why when whoever is up at the one-stop should be knowledgeable of what needs, these people need to know. And when they come on-site, we've had it in my last event, as long as the food are being chilled, and they're not being exposed and to open air, it's being covered, to me, that's sanitary. But, you know, I don't mind, you know what? I make my event, so the government can make money from fire inspection and all these things, but I need, even in the fire inspection, you know, you don't, you don't send a person to a foot doctor when he's got an eye problem, okay? A firefighter is gonna come there and inspect my electrical who's not even electrically knowledgeable or certified, and you're gonna tell me that this is not, this is not safe. This is not an electrician.
Maybe, Mayor, what we can do, because the proposal here really doesn't cover most of his concerns.
My concern, yes.
Maybe what we can do is work with, we'll work with Public Health to address those, because I think these are legitimate concerns that maybe other villages also encounter. And so we can, we can work together to try to see how we can address that, Mayor. Okay?
Yes.
So that we can, yeah.
No problem, Senator. Just one final comment, response to Mayor, because our, the current proposed regulation does involve money. I will say that these temporary events, which a lot of the mayors have, they cost almost just as much in terms of manpower and hour spend, as much as almost a regular facility that we regulate, because a lot of these temporary events, because they're temporary, there's a lot of the urgency getting it released in time, and the reality is, a lot of times we get like late afternoon Friday into having that event that night or the following day. So we're unfortunately pressed to do everything faster than we like, and that means dropping everything we do at times. And it's not uncommon, as Mayor know, we do go on weekends and even on, sometimes even on holidays, just to ensure that they receive their permit. We do our best to accommodate, but this does cost money, I mean, in terms of time and resources. So it's very applicable to the fee, but as Cynthia said, if you have a special village event, you get a severe discount, if you will, because the amount of resource we put into it is not recouped by the money that we assess. But we understand, we like to be trying to be a good regulatory partner, if you will, and that's what this is, a partnership, and we hope to have a successful event. And the reality is, no one wants foodborne outbreak, and we all agree to that. We're just doing our best to ensure compliance is met, to ensure the safety and protection of not just the, those who attend, but everyone across the island. So thank you.
So thank you very much, Tom. So Mayor, I think the only thing that is changing here now is that the mayor needs to provide that extra space, right? For your people.
For parking? Oh, I think, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, a lot of the village events, some of the major village events, not an issue, but a lot of the other events like involves like a large... but a lot of the other events, like involves, like, a large, a large area like E-Pow, parking is a challenge. And we may, we just don't have the luxury of driving around, looking for parking, which may take more than we like. We like to have a dedicated parking and a booth to ensure that when we do come, we're not spending our time looking for parking, as opposed to doing what we need to do. But, so you know, that's what we're asking within the regulations.
Just one more issue. Accommodation, I don't, I, you know, I can provide that, no problem. Senator, perhaps if, if I'm not successful with the governor, or, or the, the revenue and taxation. You know, I, I sell beer on the premises, and you're going to have 200 people buying beer, and they want me to provide a beer booth, so people can consume beer. That's very unreasonable. So I don't know if that's regulatory or just internal for with the revenue.
Yeah, that is, that's an issue that, that A, B, C that we have to bring up, because it was brought up to us.
That's, to me, you know, how can, how can you be so unreasonable? How can you expect a 20 by 20? Okay? For people who are consuming beer to fit under a 20 by 20 canopy?
Yeah.
Tell me if that's physically possible. And I'll show you that I'll bring 100 people to buy beer, and put them under there, and they're all tucked together. You know, they, they, they spread around the, the grounds with their beers. As Senator, I mean, I don't know what's the intent or the purpose of, of having it centralized for, for you to consume, you know? People, you know, I, I don't, I don't even say no outside food, or no outside beer allowed. They'll, they'll run out of beer. I want people to come to the event, finish their beer, but they're going to patronize the other, the other fruit vendors, or the toys, for that matter. But for me to suppress people from drinking and taking their beer and sitting under the tree, because I have to require them to sit under the canopy, that's silly. I mean, you know, imagine if your people went to breathe, went to exhale, went to inhale, you know, instead of suppressing and suppressing us, help us to get, and make the event, you know, when you do that, you're suppressing the people, putting them in one place where they don't want to be.
And I believe that's an A, B, C requirement, so we'll, we'll make sure we bring that up with them.
Yes, I mean, I don't know, to me, you know, I'm, I'm there, I, I paid my license. So if you go to, it's already in the bar, you can't take your beer offsite. You know, but we're offsite already, where else do you want to go?
Yes, for the record, that's not something that public health regulates. I cannot comment on that.
Okay. And then we'll work with them with the other issues, Mayor.
But even in that, when you drink, you know, if you put there, it could, it could be that somebody comes there and coughs on the, on the beer, and then you catch a unit, but that's anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So is there any other comments from our other stakeholders here regarding the, the rules, the proposed rules? Frank, if you could.
Frank Cruz. You know, I'd, yeah, I think so. Hello, Tess? Tess? Okay. You know, my thoughts were, you know, very interesting, Mayor. I didn't know that, some of the things that you were saying, but I did know a lot of the other temporary establishments that are going in. I've, I've done that myself, and I've, I've been to many that are not regulated, don't, don't have temporary permits. And I actually have gone through things, and I do, and I tell, I'll tell the organizers, you need to have these temporary permits, and so, and it, it upsets me when a lot of other vendors are allowed to participate, and we have, we have to follow, and the others don't, they get away with it. So I understand where you're going with the parking. I've done one huge event, and I, I asked for parking myself, just so I can bring in food and, and so forth. So I understand all of those concerns. But I, I just think that the, the amount, going back to the, the, the fee schedule, you know, it's about 90% increase. And I see where you're going and wanting to do four times, four times a year. And that's great, I think, in the long run, try to get to that point, because I, I think it was back in the 80s, maybe the first part of the 90s, when we had the quarterly inspections. And then we just had a huge manpower issue, and then you guys were just trying to, you know, put out fires. And I've been a part of that, I'm also part of the Guam Food Safety Task Force, so very close to Tom and Cindy, and understand where, where their, their needs are, and I, so I respect that. But at the same time, I think what we need to do is really focus in on, have, have a way so that, you know, the establishments that are following the rules and understand what public health is requiring, don't penalize them. It seems like what we're doing is we're covering all of them, yet the issues are really all the, all these establishments that don't follow the food code or, or the proper, you know, food safety. And so it just kind of goes back saying, okay, well, maybe there should be something else that kind of guides public health to say, you know, or, or maybe instead of going four, let's take it a little slower, maybe twice a year for a couple of years, and then see where we go there. Get to at least one or two a year. Because we're, we know we're not even at sometimes once a year on some of the restaurant inspections. So instead of just trying to say, okay, well, I know the law says four, we haven't done four in 20 years. I'm guessing it's close to at least 20 years, we haven't done four a year, all, all restaurants included. So let's get back to at least twice a year. Yeah, yeah, he's saying one, I'm, I'm saying one or two.
Let's be honest, it's...
Yeah. I'm saying, you know, one or two, at least get those. And then if you have troubled establishments, maybe they go on a list that says, okay, well, you, you know, I, I think you do have it in your, in your regulations, that they go back and get re-inspected and so forth. And do that. I, I do know that trying to put out fires is usually, you're getting all the, the concerns going into the office, and you guys have to respond to that, so you get, you're responding to a lot of them. But I, I just see that if we can go to one or two a year, and, and go from there, and then pay for that, and see where we're at, and then, you know, again, in, whether it be in five years, when you re-establish again, do that, and, and slowly build to where we want to be. And, you know, as far as the temporary inspections, what we, what you guys have in your rules and regs right now is that if you have any rush openings for new establishments, there's a fee. So we should have that for temporary. If you don't plan properly, and you, I say, okay, I need it Friday, and they're going to have to drop everything, here's the fee. You know, that's the fee, that'll help you cover those rush things, say, okay, well, you know, it's normally 25 bucks, but if you need it today, it's going to be $200. Because I, you know, I have to, you knew your, your planning, and so you just tell the public, hey, it's 25 bucks, otherwise, last minute, it's going to be 200. You have to pay that. So do you want to do that, or do you want to plan better? So, I mean, there's ways around it. I mean, even if you do the six days under six, over, you know, three, I mean, there's ways around that. I can go from Tuesday to Sunday, close on Monday, reopen on Tuesday, and, you know, so then I, you know, people are going to figure that out, so, just to save. And there is a lot of, I mean, you hit all the right things, fire, you know, just public health and business license, there's a lot of fees that go into it. So when we do the temporary events, we don't make any money. It really is just, just a community service, or just trying to, you know, push, push the brand and help the, help the event raise funds. We've done some things with Santa's kids, and that was just really to reach out to those kids, but we don't make any money. We lose money for that, but, you know, we try to help out, but it became really difficult. And I, I was, you know, we, we were bringing in food, timing it, and making sure all of our people are doing the right things. But it really troubles me when I go to the, to the temporary, and, you know, you've hit it, the night markets. I mean, they're off the dirt, you know, we know what's happening on there, we, we can, you just watch for five minutes and see, you know, all the food safety violations that are going on in there, and then it's hitting our tourists. We get all the tourists get sick, you can imagine what's happening now. They get sick, report back a Guam serving, you know? So there, there needs to be some regulations, yet, you know, I, I'm saying, let's not penalize the ones that are doing well and, and understanding and following the, the food code, and, you know, I, I agree that maybe we do need to increase some of the fees to help cover some of those. I know where you guys are short-staffed, so I agree that we should increase some of the fees, but the 90% increase is, it's a pretty big chunk to, to, you know, bite off all at once there. And for me, imagine I've got nine units. What does that do for my, my business? You know? So that right off the bat, and you guys are just one, I'm waiting, you know, for the rest to come in, so it's, it's really costly. So if we can get back to that, help public health get to where they need to, at least to go one or two, and then re-establish again in, in five years, say, okay, let's, are we, is that good enough? Is it's not? Because I think right now, we're just really, we, we really need to help them get out of a hole, because they're just over, overworked, understaffed, and I understand that, I see that all the time. So we just need to get to that point, and then reevaluate again. If you, if you're doing it every five years, I, I propose that we do that, you know, bring it up to one or two, and then in five years, revisit it again and see where we're at. Is it working? I mean, even hiring, I mean, there's a huge, obviously, we know there's a lot of turnover, it's hard to keep the staff, and so, and a lot of those, so I, I don't know what else. I know we, we increased, we did the, we followed, I guess, is it the haysetting, increased the, the, the salaries to help be more competitive, and, and that's great, and we guess we've lost a really, some, some really good inspectors. And so trying to keep them and keep them with you, so they can, you know, be trained with the food code and keep going, I know that's also, I, I deal with the same thing in the restaurants, keeping good people. But, you know, I think for me, that's really the bottom line, is just, I know where you need to go, let's meet halfway, and then reevaluate again. And then maybe there's a program where if you have troubled facilities, they go into this and say, okay, well, you know, you're, it's, it's, here's the normal fees, but if you have to come in for a re-inspection, or, maybe there's a fee for that, if you're a real, you know, a troubled establishment. So, well, you know, it's going to be closed down or whatever, so here, you got the, do the, do the proper things, where you have the 30 or 10 days to turn it around, and 30 days, and then maybe it goes into a different category that, all right, now you've got to be re-inspected because you just can't follow, or unwilling to. And then that's going to cost you, because it's costing the government money. So then you, you know, I, I don't know how you, how you determine that, but I, I think, I think that's what I see, is that you, you go around, most of the establishments are trying to follow, you know, proper food safety. It's, it's when they have to, and, you know, go out and troubleshoot a lot of issues. Okay?
Great. Thank you very much, Frank. Tom, would you like to answer someone?
There's so many things I was touched upon by Frank and by the mayor, and, and by the way, they're valid concerns and questions. And in fact, they probably hit upon what ails our division, which is we simply don't have the resources to do everything for everyone. So we've done our best to prioritize our inspections. And the reality is, the division is fund-driven. When I say fund-driven, I'm talking about terms of how many we recruit, if at all, allowed to recruit, what we can buy, whether it be equipment, resource supply. Now, there's some things that, of course, as division, we have control over, others we can't. And I'm not, I'm not going to discuss things that which beyond our control, but I can say that we do focus on the, those operations that are deemed the most high-risk, if you will. That's why institutional and food inspection plays such a har, high role in terms of number of inspections. In terms of identifying those, you're right, there are a lot of those who just don't play by the rules, and it's not fair for those who are. It's not a fair level playing field. I totally agree. But in order to identify them and to educate these individuals or businesses, we need staff. And without staff, I can't do that, but that means it requires revenue. Now, it's a tough question, I don't know, I'm not an economist, I'm not a politician, I do what I can, what we can, our division, what, what we have. And what we're going through here by our regulation is projection, in many ways. Will we be able to do four inspections a year in 2018, as, as we indicated? That is our plan. Whether all the stars and the moon align to make that happen, I can't answer that, Frank, but we're going to attempt to do so, and you went with the task force, and you know the challenges we had recruitment and funding. So those are very valid questions, which I can't really say or answer, because I don't even know whether some of them are possible. What I can say is, that's the direction we're going, and increase the revenue is just based on where we are right now, in terms of the personnel costs, resources. So it's a tough question. I mean, sure, we can increase the fees to a point where we have 50 inspectors as necessary, really, in reality, to adjust 3,000, do some like 12,000 inspections a year. And we're just not, we're doing, we're barely making 1,000 inspection a year. And that's the reality of the situation. So Senator, I mean, I couldn't tell you. Is these fair? I, I don't know what's fair, because these are just based on what we assess in terms of cost to recruit, to do these inspections. Frank is right, we, sometimes we don't do one inspection a year, like we prioritize. So those are tough questions, which I can't really answer, except to say that we have a plan in doing our best to meet the expectations of the public and the law. And these proposals are to improve our governing regulations, and which includes increased fees. Those are tough questions, which, which are difficult to answer, and I don't think just by our division, by the Senator and the public, and the business, the industry. So that's why we're having this discussion, and I like, you know, I think that's the value of having these discussions. Maybe there are alternate solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom and Frank. Is there anyone else that, Mr. Kozankey?
First, I'd like to say that I have great sympathy, and in some cases empathy, for what you're trying to do. I, I think it's, I think you've been set up to fail, to be honest. I don't think you can do it. I think they're asking you something that's unreasonable. And I agree with Frank, that there has to be another way to approach it. Trying to do four inspections, and then that requires some re-inspections and re-inspections, is not practical. And I think you're being, I think it's unreasonable, and I have great sympathy for your efforts. I think there are ways around it. I believe that most large facilities, I can't really speak for, for cosmetologists and so on, but I can speak for restaurants. I ran laundries here for many years, I've worked in hotels, I know something about these things. And I believe that by and large, the vast majority of large facilities, and certainly brand names, are driven to try to avoid problems. They don't want their industries damaged. There are irresponsible ones, there's no question, but by and large, they don't. So they're going to try to work with you, I think, in, in my experience. They, we all have this problem of, when I first came to Guam in the 70s, it was a very business-friendly place, to an extreme. Almost nothing cost anything, fees were negligible or nothing. There was very little regulation, which was not good, but it was very easy for businesses. We're getting, getting a reputation now of being pretty difficult, because it's not just these fees that are problematic, it's if you sit down and add up all of the fees for all of various places, and I agree with the mayor, you start talking about fire department and everybody else. I just spent two days trying to get just the application for an LPG tank about this big, right, which we didn't know we needed to have. It's just unbelievable, some of these things, which is going to cost us a bunch of money, okay? But it just goes on and on and on. So it's become problematic and expensive. It's okay, it's part of the world, we all, we have to live with it. But I guess I'd like to see us take an approach which I feel would be more practical and would have a benefit. And I agree with Frank. I think if we could hit one inspection each year for every establishment, that would be huge, because of all the re-inspections that are required. Fine, charge maybe a little more than you are now, but the increase is huge. And every time you have to go back because somebody's not in compliance, you charge them again. If you have to go a second time, you increase it. Penalize them. It's fair. If they're not complying, if they're not being cooperative, penalize them. Don't penalize the ones who are making strong efforts to comply and keep your job at a minimum. The inspectors, I know this from personal experience, when they get behind on the number of inspections they have, they go out to all the places that they know are going to be easy, so they can check them all off. And you can't deny that, I know it for a fact. It's fine, it's okay, but it doesn't accomplish what we want. What we want, I think, is to have all of those places fine, but all the other ones who aren't being hit made, because they take a long time, and they'll take re-inspections, and that's going to put you behind on how many inspections you've achieved. And I'm pretty sure I'm right on this, if I'm not, I'm not going to ask you to comment, but if I'm, if I'm wrong, then I... but if I'm, if I'm wrong, then I apologize. But I have had people tell me that who are in the business. So I'm pretty sure it's right and I've seen the history of it because we keep records. So all of that aside, I agree with Frank 100%. I think the important thing is to try to get everyone to comply, have that one inspection. Every time there's an issue, you have the follow-up inspections, you charge again and more as it goes on so that they are forced into compliance or eventually get closed or a combination. There's nothing wrong with that. That's the world, in my opinion. And maybe you'll get to a lot of places that you haven't been able to get to, I hope, I hope. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate your time.
If I may, Senator. Currently, by the way, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, sir. We have what's called a risk-based inspection method. We focus on those that we consider high risk. That's why we did a lot of institutional facilities, chocolate facilities, and even our restaurant inspections. We tend to focus more on a full-blown restaurant as opposed to a mom and pop operation. We tend to focus on temporary events because they usually lack the infrastructure and thus there's a concern about foodborne illness at these events. So in sense that we do prioritize based on what we deem to be type of operation or a business, specifically a particular business that we feel requires our extra attention. And you're absolutely correct. One inspection usually leads to two or three more inspections later, follow-up inspections. So, and even with adding that up, we still have yet to average 1,000 inspection, we didn't average, we didn't have 100,000 inspection last year because we just don't have the manpower. We are working on it now because we have additional personnel, so we definitely hope to see that for this fiscal year, if not the next fiscal year. So we do have a risk-based inspection method in place, so we do focus on those troubled facilities or those high-risk establishment. But even at that, you're right, some have not been inspected in years. And those are the ones that tend to not renew their sanitary permit, tend to no longer comply with the requirements. Those, and we don't hit those as often because they're not considered our, top of our tier in terms of risk, but that's not a reason for us not to hit them. And going back to another question about, and this is also the other reality. If we're to focus on certain establishments because of what we deem as high risk, the recipient of that inspection will see it otherwise. They'll see them being targeted. And it becomes a whole other issue and just the reality of it, then our work becomes just as difficult, if not more, because of that. But I don't agree with what you're saying, sir. I agree, the priority should be set based on the risk to the community and, but we have implemented that, we are implementing that. Of course, now if there's a facility next to it that we can just hit on the spot and there may be a simple operation, of course, we'll do it as well because we're there anyway. So, so in sense that we might have some inspection that are not, you know, high risk, but we do it anyway because sake of efficiency because we're already there. But our focus has always been on certain targeted establishments because we have a risk-based inspection in place. And even inspection we do are risk-based. We don't, we're not focusing on, we focus those that we considered a truly factors that could contribute to foodborne illness. And I'm just talking about food establishment. Talk about other facilities that we have yet to visit, yet to visit as frequently as we like. Cosmetology establishments, they're just as challenging or can be challenging as food restaurants, but, you know, we just don't have the manpower and that requires inspectors and that requires funding. So once again, it's like, you're right, are we set to fail? In terms of the actual number, it seems like so. Four times a year, 12,000, 3,000 establishment, four times a year, that's 12,000 inspections. With a staff of four, sometimes five staff, that's an, just unreasonable ratio of inspection per inspector. In fact, I think it's probably one of the worst in the nation based on seeing other stats, other states' ratio of inspectors to facilities. But that's the reality of environment health. So we're trying to do best what we have, like I said, using risk-based inspections as a good example.
You guys have your plan ready for this year, next year? Probably part of your plan is to add more inspectors? Probably to do first, add more?
Slowly add as we go, yes. That is the plan. That is our desire. And as I mentioned, I'll repeat again, there's certain things that's beyond our control. And I'm not here to make, add, comment to it because there's nothing, I can't really say regarding that because I have no control of those things. But the plan is based, our proposed regulation is that we would increase the number of personnel as we go through the years.
I think that's one of the risks of the, yeah. Most of the time I go to work early, then, you know, I pass by some of the restaurants or another restaurant establishments, I don't know, if I'm allowed to say what establishments, is it ABC Stores? So there's vendors delivering, you know, food over there. You know, I could see them, they should come out from the trunk of the car, back of their SUV. Those things, I think some of those are considered as cold food or cold sandwiches and everything. Just come in a box or a plastic. I think those are considered a high risk selling by ABC too, mostly tourists and everything, or committing fraud and so on.
Since you mentioned by name, and now, whether it be ABC Stores or other facilities similar to that, a lot of the food, if at all, that's sold at these facilities are granted, some are considered potentially. Thank you, Cindy. Yes, thank you. But in terms of the quantity, the bulk compared to a restaurant, they're not that significant. I mean, granted, they're significant that it can cause foodborne illness, but in terms of the volume and the turnover, the food that goes through in and out, a lot of these retail facilities are not, in terms of our inspection priority, as high as a full-blown restaurant. So there's a reason why, I'm not saying that makes it all right, I don't know what's going on, so things I'm not aware of, but we do focus on facilities, I mentioned, and the type of operation based on risk, thus the base risk-based inspection that we perform. I can't comment on what's going on, things that I'm not familiar with. Definitely, we always follow up on all complaints. By the way, that's something we do, we're fairly good at. It may not be always timely, but we do respond to all public complaints because we've always said, the public are, they are, they are the eyes and ears for us on many occasions. So we respond to all complaints.
One last one. We do a lot of contractors, you can recall, most of the regular contractors, even before we did no, we didn't contract, we always do it. But most of the regular contractors, with every single of them, you always go to one stop and do these fees, a lot of fees, a seminar, just, is there any way that you can do probably in a six-month year? And you do any of those things with a certain amount of money, probably lower than one-time fee?
Well, I recommend, and we've done this, and I'm not sure in terms of, I did not personally done a cost assessment, maybe Cindy can comment on this. If an establishment just gets a catering permit, there really wouldn't be a need to apply every single temporary event. Because as a caterer, you're allowed to perform certain operations because you have certain, because you have all the necessary requirements in terms of the operation and the equipment. So if you have a catering permit, you can go ahead and attend, operate at these temporary events without any further sanitary permit. Am I correct?
I actually know the full story to the sanitary permit. Centauri and fire department.
Okay, I'm not sure like cost-wise.
We have, we have that, we have a catering permit. We still get the sanitary permit and the fire department stuff like that.
Yes. You do have a catering license, but you're still required to get a sanitary permit for each, each event?
Every time we do a event.
Is that consistent with?
Well, I don't want to comment on things I'm not familiar with, but I will say this, if you have a sanitary permit for, under category of caterer, it'll be no different whether you're catering to like a party, a funeral, or temporary event. Now, if you submit one, of course, we'll process all application that we receive. It's very well possible, like I said, I need to go ask my staff and the processing center whether these are just accepted because.
It's applied for?
Right, it's applied for. And maybe it's not identified that they are caterer. I don't know. We can always check into that, but I can't say that as a caterer, there's no, there's no reason why you would be able to go to a temporary event unless you're talking about other agencies that has other requirements. I'm not certain of that.
No, it's because they do those events, that's why.
Okay. But I will say as a caterer, you can operate, yeah.
I need clarification on that because I have, I have vendors that do have their license already. So for you to require that they get another sanitary permit, it's unnecessary because they're already licensed to do business catering, you know, peddling their food. So I think it's unnecessary to charge them a second sanitary permit when they're already licensed for the entire year.
And maybe, and maybe that, and that's where Tom was mentioning that, you know, when it comes in, because the vendors maybe think they're supposed to, maybe it's just about, it's just about educating them that if they do have one, then you don't need to apply for one.
Well, I'm just kind of surprised that that is the situation because our, those who cater, whether it be Jamaican Grill or anyone else, they're quite aware of how, what they can and cannot do because that's part of the process going through the sanitary permit application. So like I said, I'm more than happy to look into this at our office, Senator, and I can get back to the gentleman, even to the mayor. But it's, there's, there's no practice that we actively double charge just to recruit in order to gain revenue, just want to make that clear.
No, I think, I don't think it probably, I think maybe it's the organizers of the events that probably tell them, you want to provide the service, you got to get your temporary permit, not knowing that these guys already, yes. Yeah. So we can look into that so we can, yes.
Like I said, since, you know, we're talking sanitary permits as opposed to health certificates. You know, let's say I, let's say my, let's say my parents operate a catering or a food business and I want to go out there and be a part of the temporary program, you know, at the events, then if my parents can umbrella me under their sanitary permit because I'm going to process all my food in their kitchen, okay? That is already an approved sanitary kitchen, a kitchen. You know, it's an approved sanitary kitchen. Well, in a situation where, let's go back to commissary where you mentioned that, you know, you process it there so you can take it to the event, you know, there's, what's the difference? Like I said, cleanliness is godliness. I mean, as long as the foods are being processed appropriately, cleanliness, you know, everyone practices cleanliness. But you got to make sure that you're sanitizing it so that the, you know, no bacteria, you know, will get to the people that are going to consume those foods. So more or less, all you process the food, you can be as clean as you can be. But when you don't wash your containers because there was prior food from there and that prior food that was there, that's sleeping bacteria right there. So it's more, you know, that thing's going to pass. That thing's going to contaminate the food and you're going to eat it and you're going to get, you're going to get sick. So I guess, you know, you just, it's just being sanitary, just the word sanitary, is it's going to be clean and healthy, okay? When you, I don't know how you define sanitary, but when you're, you know, you're clean and healthy, that's sanitary. You can be clean, but it's not healthy because it may look clean, but the bacteria is not taking away from, from the, from.
So maybe we can get clarification on the commissary. So let's say you have one caterer in the village that, you know, that there's an event coming up and residents would want to have a spot at this event, would they be able to use that caterer's kitchen?
Actually, that's a multiple question, actually. I'll try my best to answer the best I can based on getting bits and pieces of information as the mayor has described to us. First, in order for a facility to be approved by us, of course, that's go through the pre-operation inspection, meet all the requirements. And we will permit a facility passes, that's not a problem. Problem is, a lot of people want to use their home kitchen as their place, you know, as their facility. And some have, but they have met the requirements by like physical structure requirements, operation requirements, so that's not a problem. As long as they meet the requirements, whether it be in a house or a $3 million kitchen, we're fine with that, as long as they meet the requirements. And this facility can allow, though it's not always encouraged, and I'll get that in a minute, have others like umbrella, if you will, especially if you have multiple vendors using this one permitted facility. The risk that they face with that, and we've seen it because it'll happen, or almost happen on occasion, is that if there's a problem with that kitchen, especially when you have multiple people there who are, have separate businesses, if something happens with that facility, because it's the permit holder that we go cite, not the individual vendors who may be falling under umbrella, if we close that, suspend that facility for whatever reason, then everyone involved will be impacted. So you might have 10 vendors utilizing this one permitted facility. If that permitted facility, for whatever reasons, gets a sanitary permit suspended, the entire 10 vendors have no approved facility to do, so they all suffer the impact. So we discourage these umbrellas. But, you know, like I said, we don't necessarily dictate them how they want to operate, that's their call. But the permit must be, must be permitted and it has to be of the size to accommodate all these vendors. I mean, you have a small kitchen, you can't have 20 vendors there. If I do, that'd be very difficult and I think it's, it may not be in the best interest of the business and also in terms of sanitation, I don't think we'll be compliant all the time with it. But to answer your question, Senator, you can have a permanent facility, it can allow other vendors to utilize it, but there are inherent risks to that. Also, you got to look into, we have to look into the, whether the facility is able to accommodate these additional vendors. And I'm talking generality because I don't know details of every single businesses and how they operate, but in generality, it can be done, but there are risks to it. Like I said, it's case by case, Senator.
In my situation, I'm talking about maybe one or two to be umbrella, not the, not the entire vendors, because the other vendors that, you know, I would like that every vendor that goes down there to bid is a legitimate, like Youngman, yeah, Jamaican Grill, Crown Breakery, and they peddle their ware, so they don't need, need to worry that the inspectors come down there and they're not in compliance of sanitary or health problems. But these are people that, in my village, that want to make an extra buck here and there because of the special event. You know, I, I want them to come there, go and get temporary, you know, permits and whatever, just in compliance and take advantage of the people, the horse, the people that are going to come down to the event, make an extra few bucks, you know what I mean? It's been happening hundreds, you know, tens and decades of years, you know, and it's a recurring thing every year. I just want the vendors that want, you have vendors that are already legitimate, but people that just temporarily want to make money here and there because it's a temporary event and especially, it's in our village. So these people have an opportunity to make money. Now, whether they claim that or the taxi, that's a different story, that's not for me to address.
Any other question?
It's not exactly a question that I'm, by the way, I'm John Holland. It's not exactly a question and I've heard pretty much everybody have raised up their concerns and everything and basically it comes down to who has the money. I mean, we do understand, as talking from the private sector, we do recognize that there's increasing costs and everything and we do understand that there's also a goal for the department to reach and making sure that the public would consume anything that would be safe, right? But penalizing and giving us all the costs, just like what Frank's mentioned, 90% increase is very variable for the private sectors. We have taken a lot of increase in labor, just labor alone, just this last year, we took on that increase and we have to sacrifice so many other area where we can cut costs to be able to maintain those quality associates, I would say, staff. to be able to maintain those quality associates, I would say, staff. Having this increase, the 90%, as Frank mentioned, will take a whole lot of impact on just, just speaking on the hotel side alone, there's a number of, I would say maybe there's a good percentage that is hotel employees just on the island itself, and including all the private. So yes, we do understand that there's a goal that we need to reach, but who is really funding all of this increase? Is it going to be the private sector and all the restaurants that would have to pay the price? Or is there any way that any government agency or anybody else would be able to chip in, meet us halfway? The government would come in and put into the department, the private sector would come in, let's, let's go step, one step at a time. Let's go with our first year, and let's see how we reevaluate what we can do from there. Then if we see that when there's a necessary to push forward, let's do it better. Let's make it a, a two inspection, let's make it a three inspection, to be able to reach our four inspection a year. Let's go one step at a time, instead of just giving us this goal, this is the price that you're going to pay. Now, if I'm going to bring this information, I'm going to go bring back to my establishment and my organization, I would say, is that really what we are after? Are we going to pay this price? Is it that the department is going to be able to do all of this? If we're willing to pay, where can we go meet halfway? Because just slapping us with this amount is, it will take a big impact on just the organization's structure itself, the budget structure. So I do agree with Gereko Sankey, I do agree with Frank. Let's take it one step at a time. Let's see how we can progress from there. Let's take one year at a time, we reevaluate, then we move forward. Yes, I do understand the four-year plan, it's great, and our establishment, us, our establishment alone, yes, we would like to comply. I myself is the food, food safety hygiene for my hotel, and I do attend with the, I am part of the Guam Food Task Force, so I do understand, but yet, it comes down to who has the money? Who has the funding? Where can we meet halfway? If we are able to give, what can the government side can give also? From there, then we'll go ahead and move forward. That's all, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, John. Just, just a question for you. So you're establishment Sheraton, how many sanitary permits do you have?
We have quite a lot.
Because every restaurant requires one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It is mandated by law, and of course, that every establishment has to have.
No, I'm just trying to, to get a picture because I know Frank had mentioned, you have 10, you have 10? Or nine?
Nine.
Okay. And then you probably have, and so that's, some organizations probably have the same situation. But I think, you know, we, I heard as much as, you know, like to, even with this small group here, I think it's very good discussions we're having. What, what I would do is now sit with, with public health and reassess, you know, what the intent of this whole proposal was, ensuring that we can still address those, those concerns that, that they have and wanted to bring to the forefront, but perhaps looking at some different alternative, if, if there's even some alternatives that we can explore together, okay? Yes.
I echo you.
I just wanted to ask, is the four time a year, I mean, it's the law, so maybe, maybe we're looking at it wrong, maybe we need to change that part of it. It, where's, is that the magic number somewhere that says, you know, to be safe four times a year for every establishment?
I think it's the rules, right?
That's actually the statute.
Statute.
The statute mandates that.
So if it said one or two, then, then you would go after that. So maybe that's the angle we, where we're saying, you know, maybe that's the part we need to change, instead of, because there, you know, Tom's, I know Tom, whatever he needs to do, he's going to do it. And it's not his fault, so maybe trying to change that part of it, bring that back down to reality. And in public safe, public health, what, where do we get that four?
Actually, four is the, in, in overall scheme of things, doing four inspections a year for establishing, it's not really unreasonable, it really isn't, if you just look at just by what it's, just by its principle. In fact, even the Guam Food Code, which is modeled after the US Food Code, the Model Food Code, four times a year for a high-risk population, four times a year for a facility that caters to highly susceptible population is, is recommended, as I recall. Of course, the number decreases as the, the category or the tier of the establishment changes. But four times a year for certain establishments is not unheard of. In fact, that's what we practice for, like those establishments that cater to, for example, like the daycare, no, in terms of food. Cindy says, thank you Cindy. Those facilities that caters to the mandamkos, the, the food, and also the hotel, I mean, not hotel. No, the school, well, cafeterias, that's a challenge. I'm sorry, the hospital there. So it's not unreasonable, but, and, and we realize that doing four inspections for your, your, your given mom and pop is probably not reasonable. I mean, you know, they don't, they're not posing as a high risk. But then again, you'd be surprised what they do. So, you know, I shouldn't really say that, but, you know, it, it's case by case, and that's where history, past history of deputy establishment also dictates how often we do inspection. But yeah, four times a year, 3,000 establishments, 12,000 inspections, that's a whole lot of inspections. There's a lot of things I just can't answer, Frank, and, and as the Senator, as the mayor and Senator has mentioned, something beyond my control.
Because, you know, these guys are, are operating every day out of the year, while my event is three times, and we cannot suspend the, the inspection or, because it has to happen for the first, the three days that designated. Now, and when I look at the restaurants and you look at, and you go, you see A establishment, is that part of you guys' sanitary inspection? Because if you put A between A, B, and C, you think I'm going to go eat at C? I'm going to go eat at A. If you're a cosmetologist, I'm going to ask you what is your letter grade? If you're in a D grade, I'd rather go to somebody who's getting an A and get my haircut from there or eat at an A establishment. So like with me, I like to invite these people and come to my bidding process, because you know, it's to the highest bid. And some of my vendors goes, you know, also can you ask the managers, is this all about the money? Yes, it is. You're trying to make money for yourself, while I'm trying to make money for the community, that's the difference. You know, and I, my bid is to the highest bidder, it's not a construction bid. It's a bid to the highest bidder, so that I can make money for myself, well, you can make money, and I'm mindful that there are expenses that you have to incur, but is the, is the endeavor well, you know, worth the, the risk to the, to pursue? Now, you know, I keep forgetting about, if, if you come down and, and bid for, for the food concession, you don't have to worry about all these regulations and everything, you just come there and, 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 you know, promote your food, sell your food, you're going to make money. And I invite you guys to come down and make the bid. And I'm pretty sure that, once you take the bid, you know what the potential is already for that bid, for that concession. So if you ran it one or two years, and you make $7,000, and then you come to bid $400 only, and you get beat, uh, beat by 401 bid, then you look, it's your fault. You know what the potential that, that concession can bring. If you try to be cheap and get beat, it's your fault. But you ran the concession yourself, you know firsthand experience what that potential is there, okay? So if you try to underbid so you can save money, you're going to lose in the end. I invite you guys, I mean, you know, I welcome you guys to come down and bid for food concession. Yes, the crap ass to them. I don't need to have my vendors shaking their pants when the health inspection comes, we're not in compliance, because, you know, you people, like I said, I need to umbrella, I have umbrella, because I'm not going to umbrella everybody, because there's some people that are already business, already licensed to, to operate. But I welcome those that are, because we want to have people, have people have a choice of what they can eat down there, you know? But if, if you're stuck there, McDonald's is not down there, I mean, it's not, you're up there, you can just 10 minutes away from the venue. But I, I welcome you guys, the, the restaurant, you can come down and make a few bucks here and there. I mean, you know, I give the people a choice of what their food is going to be at the venue. Just because you're, you're, you're located there, you can take your business out there. Like you said, you're already sanitarily approved. You already have your health inspections and everything. So, you know, supporting the event and selling your, your wares there, you're making money while you're helping me as well as the community, you know, I mean, you're already, you're already licensed, so I, I invite you guys, please, join me the next time, because, you know, I had a bid for eight, they bid at 650, because the mayor will give you a wrong. The bid is to the highest, not the lowest, because this is not a construction bid, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor. So Tom and Cindy will, will conclude this roundtable now, knowing that we, we need to take action on this one way or the other, because if, if we don't do anything in the legislature, it automatically becomes adopted, right? And so, but hearing some of the, the concerns now, we'll, we'll sit down with, with Tom and see how we can address those, so that it's a really less of an impact to our stakeholders and partners as well, okay?
One last comment, can you please minimize the, the increase to the vendors that I have? It's only three days.
No, so there's, just to, just to clarify, this proposal does not change the temporary, so it's still the same.
I hope not, because like I said, I haven't read the bill, so.
Yeah.
I hope not, but if, if there is, please, please.
Okay, great, thank you, so, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, you know what?